The time is now seven o'clock and I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boyne City Council. Let me have the roll call, please.
Roll call shows five city councils are present. Councillors Noonam and Dench are absent.
Would everyone please stand at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance? Third item of the day is a special order of the day and announcements we have none. Item number four is public hearings.
Item number 4A is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow indoor alcohol sales in a C2 neighborhood commercial district for the property located at 1531 Madison Road for Walgreens. There was a Plan Commission recommendation for approval 4-0.
Thank you, ma'am. We have the staff presentation, please.
Yes. Robert Tess, on behalf of Waltrust Properties, Walgreens has filed an application for a conditional use permit to allow indoor alcohol sales in a C2 neighborhood commercial district for the property located at 1531 Madison Road. Walgreens has applied for a liquor license for each of the three stores in the city, while the stores on Prairie Avenue and Broad Street are located in the C3 community commercial district in which alcohol is permitted by right. The store located at 1531 Madison Road is located in the C2 district. On and off-premise alcohol sales are a conditional use in the C2 district. If the conditional use permit is approved, the city council is authorized to impose any conditions. It deems necessary to reduce or minimize any potential adverse effects on the surrounding properties. The city's review agents have reviewed this application and have not submitted any comments or concerns to planning staff. The city's alcohol beverage license control committee recommended denial of this liquor license. Public facilities and infrastructure exist in the area and the property receives the full range of municipal services. And the attached public notice was sent to ten property owners within 150 feet of this property and planning staff has not received any comments or concerns from residents. The comprehensive plan recommends a future land use classification of neighborhood commercial and a zoning district classification of C2. This property zoning district classification is consistent with this recommendation. Consideration of this request supports City of Beloit strategic goal number four. On June 23rd, the Plan Commission recommended approval of this request unanimously, four to zero, subject to the following conditions. This conditional use permit authorizes indoor alcohol sales within the existing building located at 1531 Madison Road. The applicant shall obtain and retain all applicable liquor licenses while the conditional use is established and maintained. Alcoholic beverages shall not be sold through the store's drive-through windows. And any major changes in the adopted conditions or use of this property shall be approved by the Plan Commission and City Council by amending this conditional use permit. The Community Development Director may approve minor changes administratively and allow accessory structures that, and uses that comply with and meet all the standards and requirements of the City of Beloit Municipal Code.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open up the public hearing for item 4A. Is there anyone who would like to speak on item 4A? Please come forward, state your name and your address.
My name is Robert J. Tess. I'm an attorney. O'Neill, Cannon, Holman, Young &amp; Lang in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, 111 East Wisconsin Avenue, Suite 1400. I am the applicant for Waltrust Properties, Walgreens. Just a little background for you in connection with the, with the request. This is part of a nationwide rollout that Walgreens is doing for all, almost all of its stores nationwide. I'm handling many of the municipal approvals similar to this throughout the southeastern, southern Wisconsin area. And it's taking up, you know, again, this is a small portion of Walgreens' overall sales. It's a convenience factor for its customers. It's not a segue to turn it into a liquor store. They're based on kind of active or other store locations where there's going on at amounts to 5% or less of their total store sales overall. And again, it's a, it's a small portion of the overall store square footage that will contain the beer and wine sales.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item 4A? Third and final call. Anyone like to speak on item 4A? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing after a motion at this time. Is there a motion to approve item 4A? There's been a motion by Councillor Johns. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Haynes. Any council discussion at this time? Councillor DeForest?
Sorry, Jim.
Yes, under section 2-504 of the zoning ordinance, the conditional use exemption should only be offered if the establishment is not considered detrimental to endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare of the community. And when the impact report was completed by the police department, sorry, I have to jump to that page. Electronically page 44. Captain Schumay stated seven locations were contacted, four opposed. Of those opposed, one was a competitor, but two were concerned with the saturation of alcohol on Madison Road in proximity of the store to McNeil Middle School and Converse Elementary School. I would say that this qualifies as a concern, given the language about what we should consider when allowing for this exemption of conditional use. Just would like to point that out to my colleagues.
Thank you. Councillor Vander Bogart?
No, thank, thank you, President Levy. I was going to make either a motion or a second, so.
Is there any other councillor comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. There's been a motion by Johns and a second by Haynes that we approve item 4A. All those in favor of approving item 4A signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two with Vander Bogart, Levy, and Haynes in a positive. Thank you. Item five is citizens' participation. This is, we've now come to a part of the agenda where citizens may come forward and speak. We ask you to limit your comments up to three minutes. We will not cut you off, however. We ask you to be respectful of the time. We ask you to refrain from any personal attacks on any councillor members or staff. At this time, we have Mr. Deloitte Sanders would like to come forward and speak. If he would come, state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Deloitte Sanders. I'm with the Church of New Life Ministry, 1400 Harvey Avenue. First of all, just basically here representing the Porter area, the POG as we'll call ourself. We'd like to say to the city council, first of all, that we appreciate Kevin, Levy, Marty Dench, and Councilman Charles Haynes for coming and walking with the POG, Community Action Representatives, and New Life Ministry Representatives on Monday, June 28th. And want to make sure that we tell you guys, we really do appreciate you guys coming out and walking with us on Glass Monday. I was very pleased with the response that we received from you guys and walking with us. A lot of the conversations that we was having and things that we was talking about and really seemed very genuine in your care. And we want to make sure that we let you guys know we appreciate that. One of the things that we observed while walking with you guys is that the neighbors are actually really focusing on cleaning up the neighborhood over there. They, it's getting with the kids and getting with a lot of the teenagers and trying to make sure that they clean up the neighborhood. One of the things that we have going on, though, is that they are putting trash bags, you know, Walmart trash bags and different things like that on fences. One of the problems that we have with that is that, you know, little dogs or something like that jump up and grab hold to the bags. Or if the kids are running by, they'll hit the bags. So the garbage that they all collected will be right back on the ground. So I was asking from the city council to take in consideration that if we can get some trashcans over there in the neighborhood of Keeler, Randall, and Port, actually Harvey and Porter, right there on the corners there, to try to help us out with the endeavors that we're trying to do over there in the neighborhood. It's very, very important to us. And again, now that the residents, I was real, it's really, I'm really pleased because the residents are very interested in making sure that we get our community and our kids safe and keep it clean. One of the other things that I wanted to bring before the council is some of the lighting. We appreciate everything that has been going on with the police department and their involvement with the neighbors and actually walking and talking with the neighbors. One of the things that we are also looking at to ask you guys, if you guys can help us with, is getting better lighting in the 1200 block of Harrison. It's pretty dark over in that area. And on the 1400 block of, I believe, Switch Track, Switch Track behind, behind New Life Ministries Church there, Switch Track down through there, there's an area that is really dark there. And we had some graffiti about a year, year and a half ago. And, you know, actually, past a while, I was myself, was outside and we couldn't see no one out there painting graffiti. But then that very next morning, you know, the guy's garage was all graffitied up and it basically is really dark in that area. So if you guys can help, just look into that, help us look into that. And the last thing that I want to ask you guys, we're trying to help out with the police department. I have a saying that the citizens, the police department is nothing without the citizens and the citizens is nothing without the police department. But then tonight, we are nothing without you guys' help. If you guys can help us with a city ordinance, I know that, you know, the sagging pants is one of the biggest issues right now. And, you know, a couple of the areas our city has adopted an indecent exposure ordinance. And if you guys can help us into looking in that ordinance, you know, these young men and young ladies, because it's not just young men anymore, but they're walking, you know, you guys, you know, pants hanging down and taking, you know, it just, it looks bad. So if we can just look at getting a decent exposure type of ordinance out there, that would be very much helpful. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the citizens' participation? Seeing none, I would close that portion of the agenda and move into a consent agenda on item six. All items listed under the consent agenda are listed routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any council member that would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Councillor DeForest?
I'd like to request that item G be removed, please.
Item G?
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone else like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda will consist of items A through F. We have a motion for approval, please.
Motion for approval, Mr. President.
Motion by Vander Bogart, second by Johns. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item G, Mr. Bots, please. Councillor DeForest, you need a staff presentation? Do you have to have a couple of questions?
I have just one question.
Okay. That's okay.
I just, I wanted to make sure, because in our original packet, the bid numbers were different. And I wanted to be, to be sure that the latest update we got was truly a typo and not creative additions or deletions of existing bids that were received in terms of what amenities we wanted included in the bid.
It was, it was a typo. The, the original report did not add into the other three bids the alternate we added into the apparent a little bitter. So now, that alternate had been added into all these bids and that's how it reflected in the total bid award.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, the bid amounts that we saw did not have that alternate included in all of them?
No, it had it in the Rock Road bid, but it did not have it in the other bids.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Now, can I get a motion for approval for item G? Motion by Johns, second by Haynes. Favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, item passes. Item seven is licenses.
Item seven is a resolution recommending approval of a Class A beer and Class A liquor license for Walgreen Company, doing business as Walgreens Number 11528, Tammy Patterson Agent, 1531 Madison Road. There was an alcohol beverage license control committee recommendation for approval that failed, 241.
Thank you. I'll take that also as the staff presentation. Is there?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor for approval of items 7, 8? Motion by Johns, is there a second?
Second, yes.
Second by Vander Bogart. Any council comments or discussion? Councillor DeForest?
I would just like again to reiterate that the commission that is made up of volunteer residents who have expressed their concern about issuing this license, they voted to decline this alcohol license.
Thank you. Councillor Haynes?
Well, I have to say that I share the concerns of the alcohol beverage licensing control committee and Councillor DeForest's concerns. But at this point, until we have a workshop to discuss exactly what our criteria are going to be for future licenses, I don't see that we have a, I don't feel comfortable telling a business that, oh, we've just decided this. I think that there needs to be a process to this before we say, you know, go ahead and apply some limitation. I'll vigorously, would like to vigorously have that discussion and, and go ahead and, and apply some criteria if we decide that that's what we want to do. But I don't think this doing it today without that discussion is the appropriate thing to do.
Thank you. Councillor Johns?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add, I am tickled pink that Walgreens is here and seems to be doing very successful in the City of Beloit. I understand this is a nationwide rolling out of adding this product to your line. However, I, you guys seem fine without it. And I just, I'm not comfortable adding it to the neighborhoods that, that the Walgreens are in. The reasons that I believe Walgreens selects those neighborhoods are also the reasons that it doesn't make sense to put more liquor in those neighborhoods. And that's just where I'm at. So I'm tickled you guys are here. I'm, I'm happy that you're here. I don't think it should affect the way that you feel about the City of Beloit because you came here without it. So I just had to say that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I'll just leave it at that.
There is a motion on the floor, a motion by Johns, second by Haynes, to approve a Class A beer and Class A liquor license for Walgreens Company. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes three to two with Councillor DeForest and Councillor Johns. Thank you. Item eight, item 8A ordinance, please.
Item 8A is a proposed ordinance to establish parking time regulations and turning movements on Fourth Street. There is a request to have a first reading and suspend rules for a second reading. The Traffic Review Committee did recommend approval 6-0.
Thank you. Mr. Bots, please.
The Interior Division had worked with the Traffic Review Committee to look at the current conditions on Fourth Street, basically between Grand Avenue and, I don't know how far north they go, to Maple Avenue. With the addition of a driveway into the Ironworks South parking lot, right across basically from Acasa Grande, that area now currently has on-street parking. We talked to a lot of adjacent properties, made them all aware of what we were considering to be done here. They had an opportunity to come to Traffic Review Committee. They didn't come to the meeting. They, of course, were appreciative of putting the drive entrance into the parking lot. One of the biggest concerns of why they wanted on-street parking there was that people didn't know how to get into the parking lot, then access their businesses. But now, putting a driveway there, it provides access into the parking lot, now they can park there, then walk across the street to the business. And that seemed to satisfy their needs for having adjacent parking to the properties out there. And then the other thing, and that's, so that eliminated the current on-street parking on that piece of Fourth Street. And then further north, where it did turn into a full four-lane streets, the signage had been put up, but there was never any changes to the ordinance that reflected what the current signage is. So part of the passage of this ordinance will update the ordinances to reflect what the signage is on Fourth Street in the four-lane sections. And then to address this issue about removing the current parking in the section between Roosevelt and West Grand.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
Excuse me, motion to suspend.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules, first of all? Motion by Haynes, is there a second to suspend the rules? Second by Johns, now to the merits, is there a motion for approval? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now, to the merits.
I'll just vote on the merits, we'll see today.
Any council discussion, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes, 5-0. 8B, please.
8B is a proposed ordinance to establish traffic regulations on Gateway Boulevard from Eagles Ridge Drive to County Highway X. There is a request for the first reading and to suspend the rules for the second reading. The Traffic Review Committee did recommend approval 6-0.
Thank you. Mr. Bots, please.
With now the opening of the street of Gateway Boulevard, we have brought to the Traffic Review Committee as well now to the, to approve the, the traffic regulating signage that's out there. That would be a 40 mile per speed limit on the main portion of Gateway Boulevard. And then adding all the proper signage required by the DOT around the roundabouts, as well as stop signs at Millington Road and Town Hall Road. And then to designate the roundabouts as 15 miles an hour. That's the common practice with these roundabouts that have been established by the DOT. And this will then update our ordinance to reflect the standards that are out there for that project.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Vander Bogart?
One question, Mr. Bots. Why 40? Why not 35? Why not 45?
The other portion of Gateway is 40. And, I mean, we don't want to make it a runway. If you make it 45, they're going to travel perhaps a little faster. If you make it lower, odds are there'll be more challenges trying to enforce it. Typical what the DOT does looks by what the width of the road is out there and what type of traffic will be on that road and adjacent property uses. And they have a recommended, recommended.
This is a Department of Transportation recommendation and their standards?
Yeah, they, I mean, they let us set them, but, you know, they get some guidelines, which would be a, you know, reasonable thing to follow.
Anything else? No, thank you. Councillor DeForest?
I have some concerns because this clearly is designed to be an industrial use road, yet there is an apartment complex entrance there. And I just, I wanted to make sure the Traffic Review Committee considered that there would be residential entering and exit and residential possibly children playing in that vicinity. Did they deliberate that?
I don't know if there's any real discussion on those particular items. The driveways to those facilities are, have some good sight distance. You know, that's one of the things we look at is, you know, if people are entering, exiting a street that has some good sight distances, so they can see people who are coming on. And that was considered for that location.
I'm thinking particularly of, and maybe, and I was out there today, so I was trying to pay attention at the ribbon cutting. If I remember correctly, one of the entrances to the apartment complexes was towards the top of a hill where it'd be difficult.
Well, the top of hills are good.
Well, and it was right below the crest of the hill where it might be difficult for an oncoming semi to see a car pulling out onto that road. Am I not, because that's the way I saw it when I was out there today.
It, but if you're sitting in the car, sitting in the vehicle coming forward, you can see those locations. And that's what we kind of look at is there's some high standards. You know, if you're sitting in a car, you're three and a half feet up off the ground and you look for sight distances down the roads based on those things. And that's why, how you set the curvatures of the roads when you build them to try to meet those needs.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was considered. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
No movement, Mr. President.
Motion by Vander Bogart, is there a second? Second by Johns. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Now to the merits, is there a motion? Motion by Johns, is there a second? Second by Haynes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Thank you, Mr. Bots. Nine appointments, we have none. Item 10, council activities and upcoming events. We'll start with Councillor Johns.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to extend a very happy birthday to one of my, my very favorite Beloit Daily News reporter. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
February 21st, right?
Third, 23rd.
23rd.
23rd. Councillor Haynes?
Well, I'd like to thank Deloitte Sanders and, and the Porter Avenue Watch Group for having us at their, when we walked last Monday, it was really amazing to see the amount of effort that the Merrill neighborhood's been going to, 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 you know, bring, bring themselves out of some trying times. And I look forward to, you know, seeing it again and seeing their progress and, and helping to. their progress, and helping to, you know, maybe bring them over to the West Side and walking as well. And I'd like to also say a happy birthday to Hillary.
Thank you. Counselor DeForest.
Yes, I'd just like to publicly express my dismay that I wasn't able to participate in that walk. I had another city obligated meeting that I had to attend, so, but certainly I've appreciated my conversations with several of the POG members, and care deeply about the work you're doing, and so appreciative of the support that you're providing in the community, so thank you for your efforts. I truly respect and appreciate the efforts that the POG group has there, so thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Yes, first, thanks to all those who participated in and enjoyed the fireworks and symphony concert on Monday down on Riverside Park, another example of a tremendous community spirit and coming together. And in that same line, this is Riverfest week, and I would encourage individuals to get out and participate and support their favorite local musical groups, and get involved in that process, so that's all I have.
Thank you. I too would like to also wish a happy birthday to Hillary. I saw her at the Rock on Friday evening, and I told her, I said, "Well, you don't get oftentimes to get the reporters back, so this is going to be one time that I get to embarrass you." So I did go home and send an email out to all the counselors and said, "Let's embarrass Hillary and wish her a happy birthday." So we, so you did a great job, and we just want to, we want to thank you and wish you a very happy birthday. I too also want to thank Deloitte Sanders and his group for giving us a tour. One thing that was very exciting to me is that every street we went down, the residents knew the group. They knew the members of the organization, they respect the organization. I don't think there was a time that someone wasn't leaving the group to go talk to residents, and I think that's very important, that they have a buy-in, and the residents know that when they come around, they mean business, so, I mean, that's always encouraging that they refer to Deloitte as, that's their religious man right there, so. But I think it shows that when citizens take the streets and let the citizens know, or the residents know, that community, what they will and will not tolerate, you can see a change in the community. And we're talking to Deloitte and the group, they've seen tremendous change over the last year, just for their efforts of getting out and walking the neighborhood and letting the citizens know that, you know what, this is our residence, this is our community, and we're going to take care of it, and we're not going to put up with, we're not going to tolerate any mess, and I greatly applaud you and your organization for that, and we will be out again to walk with you, and we're going to be walking the West Side coming up in the next couple of weeks. So I would encourage counselors as well, we all can't go together, so maybe pick a couple of days that we can go out and take a look at the neighborhoods, because truly that's where the action is, that's where we can see exactly what's going on in the community. I think it's important that as we sit here and pass policies and look at different things, we get out and get around the city to see exactly what's going on, not only in our vehicles, but do a little footwork and talk to the neighbors, and I guarantee you, they'll let you know exactly what's going on. So hats off to everyone who's doing that right now. And that concludes the council activities and upcoming events. Item 11, the city manager's presentation, we don't, there is none. Item 12 is reports from boards and city officers.
Item 12A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an amended development agreement with HydroBlend Inc.
Thank you. Andrew, please.
Tonight, my report will cover this agenda item as well as its companion piece, which is the next item on your agenda, item number 12B. On October 20th, 2008, the city of Beloit entered into a development agreement with HydroBlend LLC to support two economic development projects. At that time, HydroBlend was proposing to enter into a lease purchase agreement with PK Development to occupy the 40,000 square foot spec building that PK Development constructed at 1202 Sager Lane. The company proposed to have its blending production facility fully operational by December 31st, 2008. Due to construction and other delays, production did not begin until March of 2009, and is still not running at full capacity, but is supposed to be by the end of this year. The company has substantially completed Phase 1 of their project, but it has taken longer to create the 38 jobs that they had originally planned to create. HydroBlend has also proposed a Phase 2 project, where they would buy the two city-owned lots immediately south of 1202 Sager Lane. The company originally planned to build a 60,000 square foot production, research and development, and distribution facility on these two lots. The company intended to have this facility operational no later than June 15th, 2011. Due to the unexpected downturn in the economy, HydroBlend has completely rethought its business model, and as a result, has asked the development agreement with the city of Beloit be amended to recognize these changes. HydroBlend has identified several business opportunities that could result in private investment and job creation on the two city-owned lots immediately to the south of the building that they're currently occupying at 1202 Sager Lane. Although the company is unable to commit to a project type, size, investment range, or job creation levels, they are committed to purchasing the two lots from the city and closing by the end of this month. The proposed purchase agreement includes a provision to allow the city to repurchase the property if HydroBlend does not develop the property within, within three years of closing. The proposed selling price remains as originally negotiated, with the A2 point acres being sold for $68,941. Some of the key changes in the development agreement include the elimination of the requirement for the city to extend a rail spur to the project site. This will result in a significant savings to the city. The job, we reaffirmed the job creation numbers at eight in the first year and 30 in the second year, and they've agreed to retain those 38 jobs through December 31st, 2019. We reaffirm that line workers will earn a minimum average wage of $12 an hour, with managers and professionals making at least $26 an hour. We added language to allow revolving loan funds to be used to finance either real estate or machinery and equipment. And we eliminated language referring to the Phase 2 job creation, the timeline, Phase 2 construction size, and investment for Phase 2. With that, staff is recommending approval of this resolution and the next companion piece, agenda item 12B. That concludes my remarks, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Been motioned by Haynes, there a second? Second by DeForest. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Can you comment or explain to us, Mr. Yanki, the, what I, I understand, are they pay-as-you-go incentives that are included in the new agreement?
They have not changed since the original development agreement. It's a direct developer incentive, about 20% of taxes paid.
And can you explain to us again, and perhaps the public if they're watching, how that works?
They will pay their taxes, and then we will rebate 20% every year for 10 years, and that's the cash incentive that we put on the table for them.
And that's if they comply with the various other portions?
Right. If they don't build a building and they don't have an assessment, they don't get a direct developer incentive.
So that's why it's called pay-as-you-go?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor DeForest.
Yeah, so I see the, the language that you shared with us again today that's in the staff report, that they're not able to commit to project type, size, investment range, or job creation level, yet we are providing these incentives to them to buy the lots. And I'm especially a little perplexed by, and I have to jump back on my packet, sorry, paragraph four, the job training incentive that we're providing to them, that will provide a job training incentive up to $20,000. They'll get a payment for each full-time equivalent position, assuming for job training. And I guess my concern, and I guess related question, is they could bring in 38 people from outside the Beloit community to work these positions that we then train and pay them to, to work here. There's no, there's no incentive for them to hire local Beloit and train local Beloit, and I'm just wondering if there's any way to do that.
Not to my knowledge. I mean, they're going to try to hire the most qualified workers.
Then why are we offering a job training incentive?
Because when companies do startups, they often have a lot of cost incurred with training, so this offsets some of those costs for them.
And there's no other creative ways that other communities have provided incentives for companies to train local workers, too?
Not to my knowledge. To my knowledge, most of the 12 people working there now are Beloiters, or at least greater Beloiters.
Thank you.
Counselor Johns.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to quickly compliment you, Mr. Yanki, and as well as City Manager Art. I think you both are doing a tremendous job, working with the businesses that are in, in the city already, as well as recruiting additional businesses. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job, and I just thought this was a great opportunity to share that with you, so.
Thank you.
Any other council comments or concerns? There is a motion on the table, all those in favor, signify by saying aye to 12A. Any opposed? Hearing none. 12B, is there a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor? Any questions? Counselor DeForest.
I, I'm not sure what to do about this, because this email was sent to my city email regarding this agenda item from a resident who had concerns about this particular sale, but it wasn't forwarded to me until today at 4:26 PM, as I was walking out the door to come to our 5 o'clock meeting, so I didn't, have not had time to follow up with this resident about their concern. I mean, is this a timely matter, that we can wait so I can follow up with this resident about what their concern is?
Can we, could I actually make a suggestion that maybe you share that with Andrew, and maybe he could follow up the residence?
Well, I hate to vote on it if it's an issue that would affect my vote, so that's my concern.
We do have a closing scheduled for Thursday.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just thought I would check.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor of 12B, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item 12, item 13 adjournments, is there a motion? Johns, is there a second? Haynes, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we adjourn. Thank you.